All right, Seville, Jim Schrader.
Here.
Tom Jerk.
You.
Justin Daly.
Yes, ma'am.
Kim Schuessacker.
Yes.
Isaiah Crowe.
Yep.
Uh, proposal posting, stamp of the pledge.
United Nations.
United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands. One nation, united, in this world, with liberty and justice.
Move to approve any agenda?
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? Sue.
Yep.
Jim.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
Isaiah.
Yep.
Kim.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
Move to approve the meeting minutes at December 11?
Second.
Any more discussion? Sue.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
Isaiah.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
Move to approve disbursements in payroll?
Second.
Any more discussion? Sue.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
Isaiah.
Yep.
Kim.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. All righty, I welcome you to the new year. Um, we'll have a good year this year. Uh, the second thing, uh, let's see, what was the other one? One of those number blocks. Uh, I guess, uh, I guess the other thing is I want Isaiah if he can get a policy committee meeting going. Uh, because I have a lot of questions about facility use like everybody else is and I had board members ask me about it too. Um.
Too bad you lose next.
Yeah, I guess so. I'll turn it over to Mark if I think I'll.
Yeah, I know, some of this will be covered in the Facilities and Transportation Committee meeting. But, uh, HSR, make contact with them. They will be, start working the lead go January 27th. Uh, just want to let the board know that both settlements from the Department of Transportation and the Village of Black Earth, that they have all been received and deposited in the bank today. Um, a couple things we've been talking about in district leadership, it means once a month with staff members throughout the district. One of the bigger things we'll talk about, this is a mid-team tomorrow, but, uh, just on testing updates and everything. Um, names are changing, different times, different, um, frequencies and everything, so probably it may be a good curriculum meeting topic. Uh, but one other thing, we'll look into this, but, uh, it may be interesting for the board to take some of the samples, smarter balance assessment questions one night. See how you do, so. Um, with the Tahoe, the, the a la carte line has been renamed or named. It's Vanguard Express, so we're, to get some signage and everything and I was in the cafeteria today and I had to come back 15 minutes later because the line was up, you know. The line continues to be significant, which is very cool. Another thing, the DPI is, uh, Carol heard this at a meeting last Friday with Kirkland Directors, is this global education certificate, right now that there are, there are six districts in the state that have it. But it's a, the application, um, requires districts to demonstrate teaching for preparing students for global settings. It includes foreign language, four years of foreign language and then emphasis, and Carol, if you just want to read those?
Yeah, it's, um, eight credits of, of specific coursework that's got, um, global information in it like, um, global economics or different cultures and so on and so forth. That's one area. And the second area is cultural literacy, where the students do, um, at least four fiction or nonfiction books and then attend like films, musical exhibits or something like that. Um, folk regalia and other school sponsored events, um, might be traveling abroad, might be, um, looking at, uh, going to a oral languages day or something along those lines. And then, uh, 28 hours of a community service project, um, in a culture other than their own, so it might be a pro re or service club or tutoring a child with, um, English language learner or volunteering to help an adult who would like to learn, that's, uh, English is their second language and they would like to learn English or something along those lines. So 20 hours in those areas, so four different areas that they would, and then it would, um, come across as an endorsement type thing on their diploma. And, um, there was some indication that some of the schools are thinking of making it one of their screeners for admittance in the college. So if they had two students that were otherwise identical and one had this, they would take precedent in as far as admittance over somebody who didn't pursue this, so.
Well, something to think about, we'll talk about a little bit as a mid-team, but just kind of some new ideas. Also, uh, roof bids are due next Monday. That will help us frame up our budget and planning for the rest of the year and next year. Dennis Wood gave me a phone call, uh, last week, but also then confirming this week. And I think he, did he get ahold of you today? I said, oh, or? So they're hoping, you know, they're still working on planning, uh, the 50-year celebration and, uh, you know, he did, he's inquiring about how that would work with homecoming, but just right now I'm sharing it more with the board. It doesn't sound like they'd be prepared for June, so. Uh, also, uh, we have climate culture meeting on Wednesday in this room?
That's what I.
Okay. At 3:30.
Yeah, I wanted to welcome everybody to that and I'll see you there and I'll vote, the board members will come in.
So, that's what I have.
I got a question for you.
Yeah.
Um, the HR, HRS, was that what it was?
HSR.
HSR?
Yeah.
I thought when we voted on that, I thought all we voted on was to send it out for bid and.
No, that's incorrect. You voted to give the Facilities and Transportation Committee the ability to select.
Okay. Yeah. I would like to have seen it back on the attendance to.
But you gave the board, you gave the committee, you gave it to the committee.
Motion was to give the committee.
The authority to select.
Okay. All righty, uh, facility, well, we'll go on to that. Facilities and Transportation Committee meeting on January 9th. Uh, we went through project updates. Mark filled us in on help repairs and maintenance and replacements are being done and there sounds like they're right on time. Uh, then we went on to the, um, request for proposal for the facility use study, which Mark got, filled me in on some of the other companies, but it ranged from five.
We had, we had four, four submit bids. The range, uh, costs were between five and $27,000, I believe, or $25,000.
Somewhere near.
Yep.
Um, they checked on the, spent, it's extensive time, the administration, I don't remember who all was with you.
Oh, Randy and, Randy and Aaron.
Aaron.
Yep.
On the HSR bid to see why it was so low. And, uh, it's, from what they're saying, it covers everything that's the, the other bids covering.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that they felt, uh, that it was going to be worth, worth it, that it was a legitimate bid, I guess, so to speak. Some of the others, one, we had extra high ends, if I remember.
Right, one company wanted us to, if we went with them, we would have to go with them if there was any future construction. That we wouldn't be able to go out to bid on that. Another one, split it up into two parts, yeah, $17,000, $8,000, that was the high bid. We had, you know, all four were good. Um, the, uh, other one, in, in the end, it came down to cost. We believe both were, we were fortunate to have four good proposals.
Right. So the committee voted 3-0 to, to, uh, hire the HSR company to do the, do the study which they are starting in, this week?
No, 27th is our first meeting.
Uh, to get stuff going. Um, and then we went on and talked about, uh, having a presentation on.
In the future, yeah. What, what's about, there's a, a new law that allows us to do energy, do construction if there's energy savings and bond against it. And initially, it was, you had to do it all at once. Now you can pay it off over, if you can get it to pay off within 20 years, and I know our goal has always been three to five years. But so this is a mechanism to do some maintenance without impacting the, uh, current budget and not impacting the levy. So it's just basically whatever you save pays off the project until it's done. The committee discussed that, you know, once, this, this would be a topic for consideration in March or April, once we've got the assessment and everything. And then we went along and go from there. Once again, it's an option and, uh, what, I, I saw a presentation on this, I've seen, been in a couple, but a very thorough one last month. And what they do, what allows you to do is leverage and do some projects that have high savings. And we may not have, you know, a lot. HVAC would be, you know, some of the best, but, uh, if you were to do some HVAC work, then couple, coupled with some others that would be cost savings, but, you know, not, not as good as return on investment. So, again, that's an option, uh, an op, option, and then it's something that, again, doesn't impact the levy or the existing budget.
So we just recommend that the, the board have a presentation by this, got the econ about it and explain it to the whole board at some point in the future. Other than that, I think that was it. Public input. Moving. We'll go on to district business personnel. Motion to hire Kara, um, probably.
Waszuleski.
Waszuleski as a 1.0 FTE special education teacher with a starting annual salary of $32,300. I'll say, I'll say, any more discussion?
I just want to point out, she's also, her primary responsibility is, um, excuse me, interventionist, so I just want that understood.
Any other comments that need to be made? Sue.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
Isaiah.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Uh, discuss possible action to increase food service employee hours. The need for that is.
Sure. Well, a couple things. Uh, at this point in time, we're serving, um, almost 200 more meals per, per day. And so, at the existing hours, we were at, uh, basically 20 meals per hour per employee, which in working at Tahoe, that's, that's the highest spectrum of acceptable. And so, by doing this, by adding it, the hours where we've put it, and also, that's one reason that gets us to 17 meals per hour per, per employee. The second part is, is to help delineate, everybody's taking on a different type of responsibility. And you can see that, of course, they're food service workers, but the responsibilities, as you can see, um, that's where they're at. So where you see the changes, the work is occurring simultaneously, so it couldn't go to one person or another. It's all happening in real time and allows them to do their, their, you know, work assignment better. So with more meals being served and then a fixed price for the meals, then we were, we, how should I have it, have, have additional money available to us. And so, that the, at higher sales will defer the cost of adding more hours.
Just a one-year, a one-year thing to see or?
Well, I, I guess contracts are year-to-year these days.
Yeah.
But, I mean, how should I put it? We, the recommendation isn't being made because we think it'll be less next year, so.
How many hours are you talking about and to whom?
I think it's five. Those are all delineated on page 14. So, you know, the lead cook went a one hour, the food and vegetable prep went a half an hour, the cold prep an hour, a la carte, three quarters, and then the kitchen needs and assistance at the elementary schools are half hour each.
And our current employees are all supposed to be.
Yes.
I'll make the motion. So the second.
Second.
Any more discussion? So we increased by 200 meals.
That's where we're at right now.
Does that include a la carte?
That's equivalent, yeah, a la carte is the meal equivalents, yeah.
Yep.
Which is like $3.19, for every $3.19 in a la carte is equivalent to one meal.
Oh.
Food service.
Far greater than that one. Huh, that's good. Sue.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
Isaiah.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Athletics. Motion to approve Thomas Lancaster as volunteer coach for the 13-14 girls soccer season.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? Sue.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
Isaiah.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Public donations. I have a motion to accept the donation of a Kurzweil 88 key workstation electric keyboard valued at $900. So move. And a second.
Second.
And a second. More discussion, who's donating this?
It's a, it's a community member who I think is kind of, does music stuff and instead it was just easier to donate than to try to sell it. Be upgraded and it's in good shape. While we get a fine, a stand and then, and a speaker. I saw it, it looks brand new. So, yeah.
Thank you whoever the person was.
It's actually like a $3,000 or $4,000 thing, but, uh, that's what they're selling for on crisis, but they didn't have to go through that mess. So.
Thank you whoever was.
I called the check. I called the check because I'm wearing Tom.
And an extra sale. Twelve check, thank you. Sue.
Here.
Jim.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
Isaiah.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
On the board business, discuss possible action on board members' attendance at meetings. This is mostly a board discussion. And this has been brought to me by several board members, uh, is, is, was the attendance to the board meetings. And how, and that's why I had Lisa bring up the board attendance, uh, and people's lates and stuff like that. And, so, Sue, you, you had made a comment and questioned about it. And if you want to go ahead and say stuff, I'll, you know, kind of talk about it, discuss it. We kind of police ourselves.
Okay. I guess the problem that I have is, is if a board member arrives, um, like right before adjournment, then I don't think that the district should be paid enough for their time at that board meeting. I mean, the purpose, well, how many years ago it was when we went from having just a set salary, a set salary for board members that we paid per meeting attendance? Because board members were missing meetings, but they were getting paid at the same rate as somebody could make in their own time. So that was the purpose of going to the individual per diem for meetings. And if we look at this, um, I got paid in July and I didn't get here until 8:02, that probably wasn't appropriate. And Jim was, the last couple of meetings was here right before we adjourned and that has him being paid to it. I don't think that's appropriate either, because we weren't here for the majority of the board meeting. And I don't know, you wouldn't know if you're going to make it for the majority of the board meeting, but if you're that late, you'd answer, say. So I would, I don't know if I need to make a motion to have those three weeks stricken as absent. But I certainly would do that, because I don't think those three should be paid.
It's necessary to do that, but what, that's your thing there. I don't think you can. You may not be able to. Because, um, salaries are set at the annual meeting. Right. And at the annual meeting, the motion was to pay per meeting with no. No. Specific as to if you were there or not, um, for the entire meeting or whatever. And, um, I think it's up to each individual board member if they show up late. If they don't feel that they should get paid, then they, then it's their responsibility to say something and say, I don't want to be paid. Not my job.
Okay. Except payment is definitely the issue with being here and the fact that, once we signed that little piece of paper and said that we wanted to be elected, we were expected to be here on weeknights. And we need to be here on weeknights because we, we give up our, Monday nights are board nights, that's all there is to it, I guess. And that's how I see it, that it's not really the payment, but it's just not being here and voting on issues and being here to contribute to whatever the discussion is that's going on, so. And should, would you say that you'd like individuals to just say, I don't pay me for that one? But I.
That's my, that's my thought, it's.
I guess I'd rather see people here.
It's set at the annual meeting.
Yeah, well, that I understand, yeah, I understand, yeah.
So.
So is this executive session and meetings or just people?
It's an official board.
Whatever official board.
Board meeting. So yes, you start an open session and an executive session. If you're, you're doing interviews, for example, you still start and then go into executive session and then come out open.
The purpose of the meetings is for us to discuss in the public and debate and, and stuff like that, so. I, I guess the way I look at it is attendance is, is should be mandatory as much as possible. I mean, I know I've been late, I see my name on that list too, so. On it, and I, I, I agree with you, Sue, if, you know, if you're not there, you shouldn't be paid. I don't pay workers that don't show up either. So, uh, but I, I see Tom's point that it is an annual meeting debate for that, and maybe that should be brought up at that point. Um, but I, and I, I wholeheartedly will take his suggestion that if I'm missing bulk of the meeting, that I tell the secretary not to put me down and I'll still stay with me. Well, they can put you down, you just have to talk to Lisa and say, hey. Don't count me for that. Yeah. Yeah. Because you'll still want to be on, you still need to be on minutes. As when you arrived. Right.
One for me, yeah.
Yeah. Any more discussion on?
None on that particular thing, but I do have a question that I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to ask it on or ask it anyway. And I'm going to ask it of Jim. If he thinks that missing 25% of our board meetings is representing his constituents in the school district? Because I think that's just a whole lot of, were that going to be the case, I guess I would, you know, wonder whether I should run or not, but this one is that much.
Well, I'm glad you're thinking for me, Sue. I appreciate that. Um, I will explain a couple things. Uh, November 4th, uh, I was the only one absent. I arrived at 7:45 and the meeting was over. And, uh, which leads me to think, do we really need to have a meeting if it's going to be nine minutes? I mean, you were here, is, you, you remember that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Uh, I don't, I'm not going to explain my absences. Um, I will, if individuals ask me, I'll be happy to explain my absences. But I'm not going to do it as a group, okay? But I'm glad you're thinking of me.
I think I'm thinking of the district getting the best representation. And knowing what your feelings are and things is important. And if you're not here, when you're talking about the budget or whatever, you don't get your input here, I mean, we need your input.
Yeah, your input's valuable.
You know, I want to know what you're thinking.
Well, I.
You may have ideas that, that I haven't, that I haven't thought about, that's like, well, wait, maybe, it won't.
Well, I'll take that into consideration.
Appreciate it.
But, uh, I will be missing some more meetings, depending on my traveling. And take it to heart that, hopefully that I've done everything I could in, in the meantime, but I won't speak anymore on that.
But I think the reason that we had to have the November 4th, it's the first meeting of the month and that's when we approved bills, so we'd prepare those.
Yeah, I think.
So even if that would be the only thing, no?
No, that was, I, I believe, uh, that was for the levy because it was postponed.
There you go.
Yes. Based on the issues at the state level.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay. Okay, so then, obviously we have money to pay.
Right, otherwise we don't have, you know.
So, speaking of that, can we, uh, speak to, uh, attending meetings on time? Yes, yep, I'm one of the biggest offenders. But, uh, if you want to talk about that, I, I, I agree, I'm probably one of the biggest offenders. It is very hard for me to get out of the middle of the day and, but I will make an extra effort to be on time. That's where it's going to, and I don't know about other people, but, uh, I could always bring up one. Just ribbing, just ribbing on that one.
Why, we're all, why are we all confession here? I missed August 28th because I was four minutes, actually five minutes late and the meeting ended in five minutes. I was in soccer meeting, I came five minutes late, I missed the entire meeting. I'm, I knew I felt bad about that, but it was like I was walking in and everybody's walking and chuckling and I'm like. I mean, does the pledge take that, does that, I mean, can the pledge take something like, I mean, it's, it just seems, it was just very, I don't know, just walking.
I don't remember what the conversation was, but it's, uh.
It was very short.
It must, you know, it must have been something we had to do because of a deadline or a timeline.
We were hiring people to have jobs.
Yeah.
It was something.
It was a matter of getting them hired, uh, by a deadline.
Summer.
Well, I think, what's that?
Summer weekend, summer alone.
Yeah, that's just part of the job. I think, um, it was good to bring this out, you know, like I said, several board members have asked me about it, talked about it. Uh, I know the last meeting, there was conversation and Sandy had pointed out about how do I record this and this and that. Um, I think that's, if we all take a, uh, a good hard look and say, hey, can we get to this? And get the, you know, get to the meetings, we value, everybody's input, even though we may be on both ends of the spectrum, it, uh, it does, uh, give the district their, what they're due for, for, uh, governing the school district. And so, I think as we all make an extra effort and kind of call it the New Year's resolution, this one, uh, that we try to make at the meetings and so we can have good, healthy debates and, and stuff like that, it'll be great. So if there's nothing else to be said, we can move on to the next one. Next, uh, discuss possible action on scheduling a professional development sessions with Wasby. This we brought about last meeting, we talked about, uh, it's mainly for board development. And part of this was brought up because, you know, we ask our educators to take professional development and we as board members have the ability and for the district to pay us to go to various functions, conferences, meetings for, for board development. I know I'm very lax on going to, in fact, I've never been to one, to be honest with you. And as I thought about it, I know in my professional development, horse training and, uh, the horse business and farming, I go to various professional development conferences and stuff like that. Um, I feel that, you know, uh, it, it would be good for the board. You could always learn, if you're not learning, I was always told you're dead, so. Um, whether we use it or not, that's a different story. Um, but if we ask our educators to take professional development, I thought maybe if we did one a year for the board and had them come here, it would be a lot easier for board members to attend than us having to go to various functions. I know the ones that I can't get to are usually during my busiest season is, which is planting in the first part of summer. Uh, and it's very hard for me to get away, so I guess I would look at it, if I'm going to get paid to go to one of them, why don't we pay for having somebody come here, whether it be Wasby or some other function? So I guess that's why we brought it, why we have it. Uh, I guess I, we kind of looked at the presentation workshops in Wasby for, um, board governance. Uh, I think we all, I know Isaiah's expressed, you know, wanting to learn more about board governance and stuff like that. Uh, I think we all probably get brushed up. I know that there's been a comment made, well, as the superintendent's teaching the board, that's not a good idea. You know, we can always throw out the stuff we don't agree with. Um, but I think it could be a good thing and, uh, actually, he has a cost effective as sending board members to various conferences to Milwaukee or Madison or the Dells or wherever, they have their various conferences. By the time you pay hotel, travel expenses and whatever else, conference, uh, the cost of the conference, which I don't know what they cost in educational work, but I know mine get pretty expensive once in a while. So, uh, I'll, you know, entertain anybody else's comments or suggestions. So, uh, I'll, you know, entertain anybody else's comments or suggestions.
I would like you to have it as part of the regular report meeting.
I agree.
I personally don't want to go to any more meetings then.
That's, that was kind of my thought process, was be one of our board meetings.
I mean, I think if you have it, you know, as a separate thing, there will be board members that won't come.
Yeah, well, yeah, and I think, you know, we all have busy lives, busy schedules. Yet, you know, to me, this makes more sense and it might help develop the board and we might learn some stuff to help the district better, is the way I look at it. Any other suggestions, comments?
Did anybody look at the website? Mark sent us a link. Interesting stuff to look up, the, the different presentations that they do put on from, I don't know, there must have been eight, ten of them that they gave. The ones that I found really interesting, uh, listening and answering questions, leadership as communication, um, key overwork of school boards. Then the last ones that were, I thought were really interesting, uh, how to evaluate a superintendent. Leadership development of the school board from climate to politics and communication and leadership team development for the school board and superintendent, which are just one or two, but.
That's all honor of governance and leadership.
Well, these are, they're workshops.
Oh, okay.
Or it, it appeared that these were the workshops and these were specifics that they would come and talk to us about, or they must have people set up for.
I, I guess, you know, I, my thoughts would be one a year to start with and, you know, or as needed, or one a year would, would work. And it could be, like I said, on any topics, could be, you know, board governance or educator effectiveness or curriculum, whatever we can find and see that we, you know, we need to have a little education that we could spend one meeting, an hour at a meeting or whatever time it takes.
Their years on programs are two and a half to three hours. So what I've observed at a former employer is, I mean, I, I know what Sue's saying, I'm just sharing, usually, I guess it can be in replace, in place of a meeting, but usually they do it on separately. I'm just sharing what I observed, doesn't happen.
Put it on a short meeting night. A five-minute meeting night, yeah.
And some of these listed here are, I mean, they're listed as one to two hours.
Let's put this back in, but under two hours. Usually you start losing interest after two hours. Anybody else have comments, suggestions? I know you've got one, I see it turning in your head there, so. Oh, okay.
I would make motion that we schedule a professional development session with WASB just to give them a try one time their own.
Do we have a second?
Sandy?
Any more discussion?
If this goes well, I'll probably do, I'll try to do more in the summer, whenever I'm free to do it. Because I like to learn from other board members that are out there too.
Yeah, that, that would be good. So. I, I accept.
And I think that broadens your horizons as far as, you know, what other, other opinions are out there that might not be represented in our group necessarily, although we all represent our constituents. So this is to make yourself a more rounded board member, so. Right now for me to go to one is a little bit hairy because.
I'm not doing that. Any more discussion? Seeing none, Sue?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Tom?
Nope.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Allo, yes. Alrighty, future meetings and important dates. Policy, do we get it on setup?
Yep, I just got some contact made today with Tricor and we're working on creating that regulatory policy for the establishment, so we can have that in a separate, real discussion, get it followed in. Yep.
Okay. Now I think Mark had a bunch of policy stuff that had to be cleaned up.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Taken care of?
Yeah, we're getting.
What I like to do. Lisa's helping.
Do you have any close dates or do you want to set that up earlier?
I'll come in.
Okay. Carol, you want to correct me? What day? I think I'm on that one.
Before on the board meetings, if that works for you?
Okay, twenty-seventh? Is that all right for your month?
Yeah, I think it works.
Jim, are you on the grid?
I'm on the grid. Isaiah.
Isaiah. Are you, twenty-seventh, all right?
Yeah, yeah.
About an hour? Any other, uh, meetings, committees of the board?
I, I think we'll be probably using finance in February, it's not ready yet. And a little bit of moving bits, let it come on the twenty-seventh.
I'd like a, uh, public governmental relations meeting to discuss fiftyth anniversary, so about the twenty-seventh. Six thirty?
That's the grid room.
We got the grid room there. I thought you might go in a different room. Yeah, we could go somewhere else. If I need to be in that one.
I can go in the grid room.
Monday, it'd be before the next board, next board meeting.
But Alsa wants to be a board.
Alsa wants to be a board.
I think the grid room, kind of, both are important conversations. I mean, I, it just means that's one thing.
You had different date, different time? Grid room.
How long of a meeting do you, do you?
This chair's going to hang.
Do it a half hour before that one?
Sure, we could do that. Six o'clock?
Six o'clock. Move on to that, six thirty.
At six? Yeah. Or if you want to do it the following month, I, I can do it any Mondays, pretty much at the board regardless. So let's give, um.
If you do the following Monday, you're telling to get it away from Temps.
To, to the fourth. To Alsa's, she wanted to be. Yeah, like the fourth. Hey, Alsa, for the fourth, be all right? You're talking about moving to the tour. The, the fiftieth?
Third is the Monday.
Third, third.
Third of.
February of. At six thirty, or six, or six? Six. Six o'clock on the third?
But there is no quarter schedule.
Right. My wife started running on her old bowling and she's actually pretty. No, I don't miss it, my wife doesn't miss it. She forgets what year it is. You just thought that was supposed to be the mail, it was a pretty.
They did have the, um, the February third in Temps, so I'll contact WSB tomorrow. Hopefully the Temps is still available, so.
Oh, for the WSB?
Yeah.
And then I was just, on the twenty-fourth, this is just as a perspective, Aaron and I are at a grants federal funding conference, um, the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. I'll come back, but it'd be difficult for me to get back for a committee on the twenty-fourth.
Okay. So the public will, February fourth, right?
Yeah.
Or, sorry, I'm sorry, third.
Third.
Do you want to, could we do the twenty-first for policy, it's a Tuesday, but there's a lot of stuff for policy, so a, a four meeting might be a little hard. So Tuesday, the twenty-first? Uh, January? Next Tuesday?
No, I'm going.
You're going? Next Wednesday? Are you still going into, um?
Yeah.
Thursday?
Wasby's next Tuesday.
Oh, oh, okay, never mind, never mind, never mind.
Thank you.
So the twenty-eighth?
No, that's, uh, Wisconsin Educational Foundation, that name.
Twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth, can work.
All right, there we go, so, wait, hold on. We better check what committee members.
Can we do a Monday, can we keep it a Monday or?
Um. Yes.
It gets out to like February seventeenth, but. So I'm just sharing.
Okay, what day do you have?
Twenty-ninth?
We'll make it work.
Okay. What, seven, like, like you want it later or later, or you want, like? Try me.
I'm trying to get to my phone, sorry.
Is this January?
Yes, Wednesday.
Do you know which, which policy did you guys have in your game?
AV coordinator, tech coordinator, so mobiles for students. Hopefully the easement gets ratified by Dane coming tomorrow.
And hopefully I have updated facility use.
I mean, the question is, are you going to be ready on the twenty-ninth? I'm just trying.
I'm pushing, I should be ready.
Okay.
If not, we'll have to look at it again.
Also talk about technology, then, I may have it right here. Probably not.
What time is that?
Six thirty, believe it or the better, Sandy, or sooner the better?
We'll, we'll make it work.
Six. Okay.
Six four?
Six. Six works.
Six P M, is there?
Six, six.
Oh, the other, the other two are business ones, town bounds and investment goals.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to state statute nineteen point eight five par and one, par and C for the consideration of employment promotion and compensation and performance evaluation of public employees. Any more discussion? Sue?
Yes.
Jim? Yes. Sandy?
Yes.
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 Means I'm on it, it's over the middle of July.
Wait, we watch that one too.
It's going to be good. Okay.